...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a religion and justice for all.
Please be my speaker for one more time.
Thank you.
Carl Lovich, Reekar?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Brochus?
Here.
Ister?
Here.
Okay, there was an executive session held on June 16th to discuss personnel policy to litigation matters. Any public comment on the agenda items? Mr. Bubba?
I think it has to do with agenda items about trees. I have noticed in pruning some trees on Martha's tree around Cameron Park, when they prune them, they're not treating the ends. And without doing something like that over a period of time, you're going to get infestation in that. And I can relate to that, some property like I used to own had a big tree in the back. I think somebody might know where I'm walking right now. It was pruned by T.K. in several times over periods of, oh, I don't know, 30 years maybe. Past couple of years, it started dropping big dead limbs out, and some of them felt like that. When they cut the tree down, of course, Pop Arthur was diseased and rotted, everything else. When they got down to the base, which measured seven and a half feet across, it was solid wood. So I think what you want to do now, what I would suggest, is coat the ends where you pruned and prevent that infestation. Because if that happens, you're going to be in a place.
That's something we can pass on to the shade tree committee as well as Steve. I've got a question. Thank you. All right, um, we were paying voices in vouchrums, that's me, I guess. We have $131,694.19 in our general fund and $5,765.60. I make a motion and we pay those bills.
Reekar?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Okay, let me get this thing here. Here. Whereas our nation was conceived from July 4, 1776, with the Declaration of Independence, which includes the statement that "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights; that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And whereas, on July 1, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the United States; and whereas the Civil War ended with the surrender of General Lee on April 9, 1865; and whereas on June 9, 1965, General Gordon Granger arrived at Galveston Bag, Texas, with the Union troops and announced that people of Texas are informed that according to the proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. And whereas, in recent weeks, across our nation and the world, people have joined to demand an end to systematic racism and oppression of African-Americans; and whereas Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and celebrates the fundamental truth that all people are created equal and that liberty is a right endowed by our Creator; and remind each of us that precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity were at the core of the American dream; and now therefore, very resolved, that Mayor Kurt Kurlowich and council members of the county of North Carolina, California, to hereby, June 19, 2020, as Juneteenth, I encourage all residents to become more aware of the significance of the celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation. Do we need a vote on that? Mr. Brochus?
Oh, um, I'd make a motion to accept the resignation of Derek Kazinsky due to employment abandonment.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
He was pregnant.
Yes.
Non-union employee discipline, Joel, I'm going to wave this to you.
Okay.
Kurt and I talked about it a little bit earlier today, and just going to yield to you.
Okay. Um, what happened is that at our last executive session, we had discussed the employee disciplinary policy procedure and updating the same, basically, which because it deals with employees, we are allowed to discuss in such a manner. However, um, we really didn't give much detail as to what we wanted to see, or you didn't, as what we wanted to see in this policy. So what I did was I took the existing policy and I took out a couple of things that were replicative. I added some things, and I'll run through it with you fairly quickly now and see if you guys have any questions or things you want to bring up. The first thing is, you'll see that in the top paragraph of the first page, it states that this is a policy relative to discipline of the employees. Oral and written warnings and progressive or exclusive discipline up to and including dismissal may be administered inappropriately under the circumstances. So previously, it just said progressive discipline. The reason I added the word exclusive discipline in there is that there may be offenses for which you don't want to follow. First one's verbal warning, then a written warning, then a suspension, then a termination. So you can skip ahead, okay, as you see fit or necessary due to the perceived importance of the punishment at the time of the discipline, I should say. Um, we also reserve the right to terminate an employee whose conduct merits immediate dismissal without any aspect of the disciplinary process, however, we'll get into that later. The Group One offenses procedure for discipline would be the first offense would be an oral reprimand. The second offense would be a written warning. We have a list of Group One offenses. Neglect of duty, failure to report injury, habitual carelessness and recklessness, playing tricks or jokes, leaving a assigned work area without knowledge and permission, disregard for safety and comfort of fellow workers, violation of established safety rules, excessive tardiness or excessive absence, insubordination, and or refusal to obey orders, disorderly or immoral conduct while working for the city, line or deceitful conduct while working for the city, and release of any unofficial information. Now, if you go through Section Two, okay, the Group Two offenses, we had discussed adding basically a middle group between the first and the third group of offenses such that there could be a suspension without a necessary termination, or there could be a suspension in lieu of a written reprimand or verbal warning. So what we said in this Group Two offenses is that any Group One offense, the circumstances of which are deemed by a supervisor or higher ranking city official to exceed the propriety of a punishment under Group One, but which does not rise to the level of Group Three or a third occurrence of a Group One offense by an employee, okay? Any of those would qualify for suspension. Then we have the Group Three offenses, which are, all offenses would be disciplined by immediate dismissal. And there is a caveat to that. But the consumption of intoxicants or illegal toxins, so alcohol or illegal drugs, failure to submit to a blood or alcohol test, deliberate destruction, theft, or removal of city property, sexual discriminatory harassment. Sexual harassment is just that, discriminatory harassment would be harassment relative to race, sex, religion, national origin, color, sexual orientation, age, and disability, all of which are federally protected classes. Impulsive actions, including verbal and/or violence, gross insubordination, misrepresenting reimbursement records like time sheets or travel records for personal gain, or removal or release, including verbal release of confidential information. With Group Three, it was my understanding that the council wished to have an appeal procedure such that any employee whose employment is terminated relative to any offense listed during the third group shall have the right to appeal said termination to a private hearing to be held in the force of the council or to a public hearing before the council, if said employee so desires and provides notice of the same. We also have, it's my understanding that once a satisfactory policy is reached, we will go over it with each employee and have them sign and date it in a court of law. Any questions?
Well, if there's anything, if there's anything we can get to you and then, you know, we can either have another meeting and review it.
Exactly.
The only thing I questioned like the last time, we should have a chain of improvement. The chain of discipline progression is there. But I'm thinking there was possibly should have in counseling before the first oral reprimand. And that can be official, but with something in your folder. But it just, the reason we're doing this is so we have a paper trail of anything that moves up. And the other thing is the timeframe on, if the discipline occurs within a certain timeframe, it's a progressive then, like we say. If the oral warning, if it happens to deal within six months, it automatically moves up. If it's after a certain amount of time to get removed from your record, and then you start fresh, gives them a chance to. Exactly. Or that, exactly, right. That's, that's the two things I have.
Would it be a suggested time period, like a year?
Well, what was done in order end of it is an oral warning, I think, could have been 90 days or six months. It's up to the, it's up to the discipline coordinator at the time they have, because you're going to have a disciplinary hearing. Almost have to have a disciplinary hearing, whether it's bargaining unit or not. If you're going to deal with discipline, you have to let the person know. You've got to give him his time to speak. And then it can be decided upon by council, however you want to do it, but have them fixed across the board. Like a written warning might be six months or a year. That doesn't happen, because if they're up to a written warning, they're one step away from being suspended, so it's a repetitive match.
What you're saying, bro, is that you're trying to have everyone have their own. Obviously, I'm writing.
Yeah, it would have to be in writing. I will say, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, you know, depending on what it is, it could be whatever. But if it's, like I said, but then you have, I said, he does something, and then it's a, it's a, it's a, and quite much, and he does the same thing all over. Start over, because you can also extend that timeframe.
Now, maybe Joel, is there any industries that enters on that?
Sure.
Just to see what the timeline is. I like the idea of at least letting them earn their way back to good races.
We should have time for this. They can remove their fault or anything.
Works for me.
But I don't know about suspensions. Are we going to do with pay, without pay?
The, I think that would be up, well, I think maybe we decide that now or we can leave it up to the disciplinary and at the time of the offense. Um, I was thinking without pay, but we can certainly do whatever.
The only thing that would be a question, and Brad and I had a discussion on this this morning. Uh, I don't know that civil services involved with these non-uniforms, I don't know what the rate is. But any discipline for a non-uniform employee, if they're suspended, as far as I'm concerned, they're suspended, they've done nothing, something wrong, they're suspended from work. There's nothing that we have to worry about being sued over or something like that.
Right.
That's up to council and the process.
So any suspension would be with no pay? Is that what we're going?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got it. And then what is the timeframe for a suspension, just so it's obviously.
Well, and that, I didn't put that, because there, again, there may be situations where you may want to make it a week or two weeks, or, you know what I mean, to fit the crime. So I didn't make that determination I can, if you want me to.
Well, no, I think I want to do a stat description. HR is part of the whole thing, so it can't be suspension as determined by the HR.
Right.
Chain of improvement, usually first offense is, the second offense may even go from one day to three days, and then the third time is termination or something like that.
It's also a discretion.
Yeah.
And the only thing I had was on appeal, just to see if you want to give them the right to appeal a suspension.
But again, up to you guys, I only gave them the right for the Group Three, but how are we consistent with Group Three, is something they should get a appeal of suspension.
I, you know, even the termination, I mean, that's, because there, actually, there's no bargaining with this stuff. There's no, and I don't think civil services involved, but. Some of those, they can, they want to be a process with the termination and the officer. And that would come in cancel, right?
Right, yeah.
And that's why I limited it to the Group Three offenses, simply to avoid the necessity of full hearings, such that I think that as part of any investigation prior to a suspension, obviously, somebody's going to get to tell their side. That's what I proposed.
So we'll just leave it at that and make the changes and then come back.
Yeah, what I was going to suggest is I'd make the changes, email them out to everybody, so you guys have it ahead of time. This one kind of snuck up on me, so I did it recently. But, um, I'll make the changes, get them emailed out to everybody, and we can, you know, make whatever other necessary changes and have it ready for the next meeting.
Yeah, I do want to say, just for those suspension, that I would, for my, in my mind, I would like to have in the policy a range that it goes from one to three days. I think a two-week suspension is a pretty severe punishment on somebody. That's their, that's their livelihood, right? And so I think also because of that, before you suspend somebody without pay, you know, maybe for a day or whatever, it's not an appeal, but an extensive period of time. I don't know how you would slice and dice it, but it's affecting their ability to provide for their family. So, um, and the opportunity to provide matters for consideration to the disciplinary board or whatever, to the, I don't know how, I, this is the first I heard about a disciplinary hearing or a disciplinary board.
I think that's just a.
It's a council.
Exactly, council.
Yeah.
Okay. And but for, like, I'm the discipline coordinator then, in my capacity, that's.
And then what we would meet with council.
I didn't put that, that word in here, but, um, yeah, I mean, I think under the current situation, well.
Okay.
And we need what it is, the change, you're right, you shouldn't drag something out. If it's counseling, oral warning, written warning, one, or written, then it's one day, three days, and you're gone. If you go through five stages within a certain timeframe, then you're not.
Yeah, and I think having it written, and it doesn't matter if I'm in the seat or somebody else's, that it will be implemented the same way across the board, no matter who the employee is.
Administrator Russell, you have anything?
Okay. So this is the first reading for Bill Number 2020-10, Quality of Life Ticketing. This is new legislation. The purpose of this legislation is to permit a citizen to pay a ticket rather than receive a citation for certain code violations. The benefit to the citizen includes that it removes the burden of the time-consuming court hearing process that you would go through before a citation. And it also, but it also preserves the right to dispute the ticket and also preserves full due process of law for the person who appealed the ticket. It can be disputed in much of the same manner as a part of a ticket. We choose the subject violations, those that are kind of most immediate concerns to neighbors, um, for weeds and grass, if they're too high, for a collection of rubbish or garbage on their property, and also for snow and ice removal on their sidewalks. The violation, they'll get a ticket, but they must also correct the violation within 24 hours. And they need to pay the ticket within 72 hours. After 72 hours, the ticket fine doubles. And then also, after 72 hours, the city may correct the violation and charge the cost of that, correct that work to the property owner. This will not apply to declared nuisance properties. Those nuisance properties, they will continue to get citations for violations, because that's the stage of the process that they're in. First offense tickets would be $25. Additional offenses within a 12-month period starts at, will be issued at $50. So if it's a first offense and you get your ticket for $25, after 72 hours, it goes to $50. If it's your second offense on the same violation within a 12-month period, you off the bat get a ticket for $50, which would double to 100 if you didn't pay up within 72 hours.
You can appeal the ticket as well.
And you can appeal the ticket, yes.
Yeah, just, just add on, so this isn't anything new that we're going after. If there's not anything new to ticketing for or not targeting anything, it's more of just making it easier for neighbors to have to, you know, deal with health, safety issues that may typically take in a week to be remedied, now can be done in 24 hours. Um, just a little bit faster of a process for us. If you guys have a question behind or anything, or.
A motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Our question, for all?
Yeah. Yep. As we talked, Joel, correct, I think we put in there that the police could enforcement, but.
Yes, we did. We gave a caveat that if the police followed what's necessary in certain situations, they could use this. But the normal enforcement would be.
Yeah, example would be snow stops on a Friday night 24 hours past. Severe area that needs to be shoveled and no one shoveling it. You guys would have to, for at least, get that process going. Or maybe it would be code office.
My, my assessment was, if you're on a call at house, with a child or something else, and you see a ton of garbage there, and there's something, then you think you'd either take care of that situation for the benefit of the child or something, you could do it. I mean, that's just something that I imagine. But you have the ability, but not the necessity of enforcement.
Or maybe enforcement.
Just that, or any offense, like you see while you're doing something, just pass the one.
Right.
That's exactly.
That's what I talked about, I had a talk, discussed with the council, I mean, yeah, before, about code office needs to have after hours ability to be contacted, which we still run into problems. And that's another problem, yeah.
So, yeah, I'll make a motion and say. Do you do a first?
Reekar?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Okay. Next is the first reading of Bill Number 2020-11, Shade Trees. This is a repeal and replace of Ordinance Number 767, Shade Tree Commission, which was adopted May 10, 1965, and Ordinance Number 774, Trees, which was adopted in September 13, 1965. So it combines all the tree-related provisions into one ordinance. The sections are as follows. Uh, we have a more extensive list of definitions. Um, we also have the Shade Tree Commission establish its responsibilities, its advisory capacity, and their responsibility to review plans for subdivisions and land development. Permits are required for all work on shade trees. Um, that was including pruning, spraying, and up to including taking it down. Prohibited activities are any activities that would cause harm to shade trees, very similar to what was in the previous ordinance about attaching anything to them or causing harm incidental to construction. We describe trees in the public land or in the public right-of-way, the requirements for those trees, care provisions, and notice to remove or remedy any problems with those trees and liability for damages. Trees on private property, there's a provision to determine that a tree is a public nuisance. If part of that tree is infringing upon the public land or right-of-way, and it is a danger to public safety. Then there is the arboricultural tree work performance requirements. And then the contractor will be, shall be required to possess insurance to cover any damages that may occur with bringing a tree down. Um, and there is an exemption for private owners who are taking their own trees down or pruning off large trees. Um, requirements for compliance with the zoning ordinance. And then there are shade tree fees, such as for the permits. Any fees received are to be used for reimbursement of the city or the contractor for work that has to be done under the provision of this article and for the enforcement in provision, and implementation of this article. And then the penalty is the standard penalty that we have gone for in others where a violation is a summary offense that will go through the magistrate, who has the, the option of fines up to $1,000 or 90 days in prison, plus cost of prosecution for voting.
Looking for a motion.
Any, any questions with this? I do want to point out that Mayor Carl Lovich called me today with some concerns he had about it, and so I just want to explain what those were, that he, he said. He was concerned about the burden on the city regarding especially the requirement for the permits, processing the permits, doing the inspections, et cetera. So he had a concern that it's a lot more burdensome for the code, code office. And then his other was, concern, main concern was the burden on homeowners to get a permit to do everything, before it was a permit, I believe, just to take a tree down. And now the permit is required for pruning, spraying, and also taking the tree down. So this concern was if a homeowner was required to get a permit to do those things, perhaps that would be a barrier to them actually taking care of it themselves.
I think before, if it was on their property, they didn't have to do anything. I, I live down in the, but it's still that way.
Safety and, these are all made of shade.
This is only.
These are the shade trees that are in the public right-of-way groups.
It's just private property.
If, if this is on your private property and it then goes over onto the street or the sidewalk, that's where this comes into play. And I want to point out that we've spent a lot of time on this, Joel's spent a lot of time just on this too, and we took basically ordinances and especially from Allentown, uh, that it is a designated tree city for the Rousey, and we worked with it. The whole idea is not to penalize people, it's simply to give us the mechanism to, to deal with these problems of the trees and public safety. So, I mean, I don't see this as anything draconian toward the, the landowners. It's here to protect the city. And in fact, what we're hoping to do is to increase the canopy within the city, because we're wealthy short, actually, in the number of trees that we should have within the city. So I, I believe that we've done our due diligence on this, and I would ask the council to strongly consider this, because I think we've really gone over it, and Joel has, has looked for any pitfalls in there. We had a very substance meeting the other week. I feel very confident in your ordinance, the way it's written, that's my sense.
And I do just want to clarify, the tree's on, on private property. So the trunk, the roots, it grew up out of private property. That still is the owner's responsibility to obey any, any danger to the public safety. Um, and so, but they don't require a permit to do anything to that tree. They only need a permit to do something to a shade tree that's in the public right-of-way. Yes, okay.
Yes.
Well, two other things I'd add, one, one are, I'm sorry, is it okay?
Someone behind me, I'm sorry.
Well, just real quickly, I believe the permits are free, that's one thing. And the other thing is, there's no cost to any citizen. The other thing is that I think the idea behind requiring a permit for the pruning, et cetera, was exactly what Mr. Bubba was talking about earlier. We don't want the job done wrong, okay? Because it'll result in a dead tree, so that's all I wanted to.
I have a question. We have, we have a tree in our neighborhood. It is definitely on private property. But every time we lose a branch, it costs a damage to the other people's property. It sure something won't pay for it, it's an act of nature. The man who owns this property has even told his tenants, "Do not leave your kids out in the yard. I won't be responsible." I'm going to get away with it. No, we didn't.
Yeah, we went out over that tree a couple of times, and it's, it's a civil issue. I think you and I had to about a trouble where it's, it's not in the public right-of-way, that tree you're talking about. It's on private property entirely, so that's a civil between you and the, and the other property owner.
But even the tenants that are paying rent to live there can't use their own backyard. That's, that's a dying tree, though, that's, that's a sick issue. That's what we tried to go on.
Sure. Or I would speak from an insurance standpoint, where, where an insurance company would say, until it falls, and then you do.
There's a good damage to a couple of houses already, entrances, they won't pay it. No.
Insurance companies won't?
Yeah.
I don't believe, I mean, I don't.
They'll pay because it's an act of nature.
Well, that's one of the great things, insurance is covered. So they have the wrong insurance company. Well, that's one of the great things, insurance usually covers it. So they have the wrong insurance company.
Robert, my question is, the corals of, you would treat your backyard.
Right.
It's a dead tree. You know there's a danger. We had discussed more than once about the fall of the, the falls that come in the neighbor's yard. Do we have the right to take the correct problem like Mr. Whipple saying?
On private property, I don't believe so. Now, the other homeowner, the, the standards would have the ability to sue that person and typically their insurance would cover it. Uh, if, if it fell there, but yeah, I think, I remember just in two years' history, but we answered questions about a bunch of that. Every time it's a door or a ramp, always that's civil. We'd like to tell you, yeah, because obviously it's danger, but.
Well, again, I, I think I can answer partially in that section forty-four oh six regarding trees on private property, that's actually about trees growing on private property, but that overhang or interfere with the use of any street, highway, avenue, or public right-of-way. Right? So I think that's as far as we can go as a city in protecting the public from a tree on a private property because we can do, you can protect the city and those are to be declared a public nuisance, actually. We can remove them. But only if they have an effect on the public streets, avenues, sidewalks, wherever it may be. So any tree on private property that can affect the right-of-way, public right-of-way.
Correct, right.
Now, we have something. So that answers your follow-up question. That's what we're going to do.
But the other thing is if, if that tree goes over in the neighbor's yard, did some research on this. That tree can be pruned by that neighbor and the debris put back over in the owner's yard.
Correct, yes. We actually ran into that number. Dustin Township guy actually trimmed one half of it. It's on his side. That side of the tree is completely bald. That was, that's legal and he paid for it. He got half the tree.
But I don't think they can put the debris over.
No, I don't think they can throw the debris in the other yard though.
They own the debris too.
Ours is only the public right-of-way, that's what you got.
I'm making a motion for the first reading.
Second.
Rashes?
Yes.
I start for a little bit. Oh, sorry. Redner?
Yes.
Reese?
Stay to the requirement of insurance.
All right, the next issue, um, or bill for reading this evening, and I gotta find it, is the piece, oh, offenses against public safety. And what happened with this is that the mayor, when reviewing some older ordinances, and realized that our offenses against public safety ordinance is way, way, way out of date and does not coincide with virtually any of the, uh, laws of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania at this time. So what we did was I rewrote it, um, and I made it coincide with the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania concerning weapons. And just in a general way, what I would say is that our, our current ordinance, the one we have, says nobody can carry a concealed weapon, period. It doesn't say you can carry a concealed weapon with a permit. It doesn't say, it is way out there. Um, it talks about Bowie knives and different things. So we updated the concealed weapons, uh, portion to allow the carrying of a pistol or a revolver with a concealed carry permit. Um, due to the issue, we, uh, again, um, did the same thing as the state, saying you can never conceal a rifle or shotgun or brass knuckles or a switchblade knife. Sales switchblade knives are prohibited. Again, that's the same as the state. Possession of dangerous or deadly weapons, um, basically, nothing here contained shall be construed to prevent the carrying of any type of gun for any lawful purpose. And the foregoing prohibition shall not be construed with sheriffs or deputies, possible municipal, state police officers, marshals, or any law enforcement officers carrying or wearing weapons that shall be necessary. Now, the last, next three offenses deal with things that are not necessarily state statute. One is sales to intoxicated, sales to intoxicated persons and minors. The, obviously a minor cannot purchase a firearm, however, um, under this, what we are proposing for the city, no one shall sell, load, or furnish a weapon which uses any explosive substance, twenty persons under the influence of alcohol or any narcotic drug stimulant or depressant, um, or to a minor under the age of eighteen years of age, except when and where specifically allowed by law. No? Yeah?
That, that fireworks?
No.
So that's not.
That has nothing to do with fireworks.
No, good.
Um, it, it's a weapon in which any explosive substance can be used, so it's a firearm. Forfeiture of weapons. Every person convicted of a violation of the subsection shall forfeit to the city such dangerous or deadly weapon. Um, that is outside of the state statute. The state doesn't define how, what happens to be done. And I'm getting to the reason that we're doing that. The, now, again, it's only upon conviction, but at this time, we have a virtual warehouse of firearms in the police department. And they're sitting there, you know, wasting away, I guess you'd say. Um, we put in here a section for disposition of confiscated firearms, which allows the chief of police or its agent or designated to hold the same until a finding of guilt. And upon holding the same for a period exceeding two years after finalization of any criminal prosecution or civil requirement, he can dispose of in the aforementioned fashion, meaning through public sale, destroying the same, or any other lawful means.
Um, I have a question now. What happens if you take a firearm for some reason? Like, when it's all said and done, there was no prosecution done on it. How is that people go back to get that firearm?
This, this only applies to convictions, only if they're convicted. And it's two years after conviction. So first they gotta be convicted, and then two years later, if they still haven't come to, after they're like, so let's say they're convicted and sentenced. After the sentence is over, if they still haven't come two years after the sentence is over, we're saying the gun has been abandoned.
Basically, two years to come and claim it.
After they're off of, I mean, they have a long period of time, and that's only convicted. Right? If they're allowed, now certainly they may not be allowed because whatever they're convicted of. Um, but that's that. The report treatment wounds is coincides with state law. Throwing missiles really falls under disorderly conduct, I would think, for the state. But here we're strictly designing it or defining it as throwing stones, snowballs, or other missiles at a vehicle or building. Um, bonfires, we talked about, nobody shall make a bonfire on any private or public street without permission or any other place within the city without permission of the chief of police. The purposes of this ordinance, a bonfire would be defined as a fire access of five square feet. So everybody can have their, our places in their yard. But, uh, nobody is allowed to have a bonfire within the city on time unless it's permitted, considering by the chief of police. And then there is the false alarm, uh, fire or need for police or ambulance. Anybody that intentionally sets off a false alarm would also be prosecuted.
So didn't this ordinance have fireworks? Because I remember seeing on the agenda of one of the first drafts, the fireworks was one of the things.
I took it out because there was, uh, we have fireworks. There's a whole fireworks scheme in the state of Pennsylvania. Yeah.
Okay, so you just needed to do more research.
Well, no, I removed it because the state of Pennsylvania has specifically set forth all the rules regarding fireworks and they changed.
Okay, so what, what are the, I guess, because we have people coming now. Obviously, we have, these are complex requirements displays.
Right.
That would affect the city.
Right.
So what, it's not allowed?
Well, the, let me answer it this way. Number one, if we take it out of this ordinance, we're not in the business of telling people anything about fire, you know, fireworks, except that the police can enforce the state statutes, which are currently in effect. The, except that, there are also rules within the city and other ordinance regarding within so many feet of a occupied building within certain timeframe, that those are still remaining in effect.
Not in the state, in the city ordinance. Not to the state.
The state, I apologize, did I say city?
Yes.
I apologize, I missed the point. There, there was in the state.
Is that, I guess, I, I've got a lot of complaints already. It seems like people shoot fireworks off, you know, hours a night now. So what, what is allowed?
Fred, prepare.
Pretty much, it's under section ninety-four oh one, title seventy-two. Uh, pretty much everything you're selling in town is, it's all legal.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, no, I'm saying, it's legal, they can sell it, they can do what they want. The only probably major thing that would have us be able to enforce this is consumer fireworks within a hundred and fifty feet of an occupied structure. It's pretty much covered the whole city because you're not gonna be able to shoot anything off in a hundred and fifty feet. However, it doesn't, it's still, you know, everybody's liable when they light these things off. It's still recited that, you know, it's a hundred dollars, it's up to a hundred dollar fine. That's it, no more, no less. Uh, I know it's a big problem right now. This is the time of the year. Now, for about the week after the Fourth of July, we get everybody for fireworks displays and doing that. And in all these ordinance, it's eleven o'clock. I just want the people, manpower to go around to be chasing around people shooting off fireworks. And I feel, I mean, I understand, I have a dog at home.
Yeah.
And my dog goes crazy. He's already pretty much got to get carpets clean because she pretty much runs through the house and done that. Uh, it's not, it's not, nothing, it's just so tough when we're dealing with, you know, I was talking to Joel and some other people, you know, we've had fourth and obstacle. They don't just stop, like, we're working on those things. And it's, you know, people get upset because we're not Johnny on the spot to be, they're shooting off fireworks, we gotta be there. It's just tough. It's just trying to, we just want people to be responsible for what we're doing, that's all.
But as long as people know what the, whatever the state departments are, the down line or something like that, just like.
I was actually gonna make that suggestion. I have them at my office. One, I send them to Jody and we have them put on the website and everything so that everybody knows exactly what they are.
They had also one, they also got a wonder. We want to listen to them, so I mean.
Sure.
I can speak for myself. I had just had a car painted and burn marks all over, all over the car. Uh, and my tonneau cover on my truck had burn marks because the neighbor was setting them off, coming right down. Uh, the plastic, I guess when they shoot them off, but they feel almost like metal, like a bursted ribbon or something when they come down. They're real hard and real brittle. You know, he's doing it, but you have that clue.
Right.
I'm making a motion for accept. They have a.
I'm concerned about these fireworks too. Why don't they make a law like they do with the Halloween or the trick-or-treat or the night of the year? What do I?
I don't, I agree. I think you should be sure, but not just the state statute. Just the state statute.
It's May, it doesn't, it doesn't end until the end of September.
Usually it's Memorial Day, Labor Day, it's fireworks.
Going.
Does, does, does the state statute have a time of the year for good fireworks?
That, that's where our answer comes from. We can't, they cannot, they're not too long.
Yeah.
The only thing you can enforce is a hundred and fifty foot. Luckily, the biggest rule we have is to enforce that. Again, you're looking at, yeah, it's anywhere in the state, but now you're looking at who shot it off.
Yeah.
You're gonna go to a house, so you get there at the top. They're pointing fingers at each other, and you want to eat it, and, and we're by this for one. Just want people to be responsible, I respect, unfortunately, some people.
This year it started, it usually starts, it starts way after, if not after Memorial Day. It started a little early this year because I mean, people were advancing COVID to get home, or all that good stuff.
There was cancer fireworks to do.
Yeah, so you're gonna have now before the, it's gonna get probably misworked.
Let's always put that up and see. That be something that could, yeah, help enforce.
They're not out.
I'm saying if, if that becomes something, obviously we want to have that conversation at some point anyways.
I don't think so, because it's a criminal.
Yeah, and enforce the state statute. And we're not allowed to put anything in our own because the state has that, so we can't.
No, that's not true. That, that's incorrect. I mean, um, to be clear, you can put any limitation on that you want. It's not a constitutional right to use fireworks, okay? The reason we removed them from this policy is because they're not weapons, okay? Um, and there is a state statute dealing directly with them. But if the city wants to prohibit or whatever, they're allowed to do that. It's just gonna be very, very difficult to enforce.
Are you guys that? I mean, with Chief Harris, that's gotta be responsible as the person doing it. It's like, you gotta be on the spot when they're lighting off. Like, by the time they get there, it's he's it, she's it now.
Would you any of the timeframe on the, not that day, period of thirty days from, these fourths or fifths, or four, split it to two sides, something like that?
I, my, my, my rule of thumb is always the week after the Fourth, because that's usually the Sunday celebration. It's usually the fireworks of the city. I always used to say, guys, you know, officers use your best judgment. And after that, we're gonna start really trying to crack down on, only because it's over, it's time to move on. Again, it's so tough to be just.
With the, the changes that the state made, the ones that you shoot up in the air, now legal.
Right, it's all required.
Yeah, so all of that stuff is now, it used to not be.
Right.
You can only do the ground displays.
Correct.
So, and to me, if someone's doing a ground display in May, is that an issue? I don't know. So.
Oh, there's something there around though, right? Before there was.
Something around, but you don't get the sales, it's now from the top.
Yeah. Yeah, that's when, that's when next beat's happening. It's gonna be a next year issue, this year.
Or then we all look around, see what's out there.
Last night, there was about thirty people crowded around the corner of Fourth and Wall Street doing fireworks, right in the middle of the street there, the intersection there. Now, that's not right, is it?
My officer addressed them before they, they came to it.
They started their own accompaniment, so.
Well, we're not gonna put anything together to do, obviously, tonight, fourth, so I think that's a future, let's explore it for next year. So it's too late at this point. But no matter what the path is, we can always amend fireworks, whatever we come up with back in.
Uh, well, I would strongly suggest that you do a separate fireworks to amend, since this deals with weapons. Yeah.
Fix that motion first. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion for accept that.
For a second, sir.
I start?
Yes.
Redner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Yes. So with that, it was originally on the business against that fireworks, so we were approached by the stands about fireworks displaying on, I believe it was August first. Have you ever seen it?
It was on the agenda. I was researching some information on that. Um, it has to do with where they want to set them off from, which is near the wetlands. And so I'm getting some answers from DCNR about whether or not there's gonna be a limited patient based on where they want to set them off from.
Right, so that'll be next beat.
Next on the, uh, agenda is a letter of support requested from the Central Sasquatch Riverboat Society. They are making an application for five oh one C three status. And, um, they are organizing, organizing to raise money to acquire and operate a one hundred and twenty-passenger riverboat seasonally on St. Augusta. They would plan to moor it at Sugarlum State Park Arena. It would provide educational, a venue for educational, recreational, and special events. They have, uh, as part of their application packet, they requested a letter of support from the city of Sudbury to include and many of the other communities surrounding Northumberland Borough. And some others have also given them letters of support. I've prepared a draft that's in your packet for your consideration.
I'll be able to go for fireworks.
We, we need a vote on, and for a motion, please?
I'll make the motion second.
Redner?
Yes.
Reese? Rashes?
Yes.
I start. Into unfinished business, the architectural services proposal that was at the last meeting, I did reengage with Strasser Bear. We also had some, uh, other talk about, uh, USDA loan, whether or not we use that in the environmental review requirements. If you don't use the USDA loan, um, Strasser Bear did come back with a revised proposal for architectural and engineering services. And you see the amounts there. The original proposal was forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. So this, uh, looks like a two thousand, five hundred dollar reduction in their original proposal. And this will be for them to complete the, uh, feed our architects for the project.
I just have a quick question, sorry, this is what I understand, so forty-five thousand, that's gonna stay put, no matter what, so if the cost of it goes up to, say, eight hundred and fifty thousand, it's still forty-five thousand, that will not change?
Right, it's not based on the budget for the project.
Oh yeah, I'm just saying, that's, that's their fee, that's not gonna change.
Right, but that doesn't mean there won't be any changes to that, because you see in the proposal, they, they talk about other unforeseen, um, or environmental review, or some other things might come up for which they would have to provide additional services that aren't in the standard, uh, district scope of work that they're seeing there.
That's insane.
Yeah, yeah, it's always. No, no, that was just my question. Yeah.
That a motion, for a second, sir?
Reese?
Yes.
Versus?
Yes.
I start? Right here?
Yes.
And this is, uh, Councilman Reese regarding the property near to the steam fire in the company number one.
Okay, so I was approached, just so everyone knows, so I'll take you out there.
In the way.
Yeah, where are we at?
Yeah, third, third raspberry, I'll pop here.
Okay, yeah, there it is, okay, so the property on the, the front of the ones, where that trailer sits now, I remember a while back, there was a conversation back and forth, who was that was, and the assumption is that it was city property, we never really did all the work to prove it, but either way, there's been high grass that's come on there, and everyone's took care of it, they've voted all down, but then also on the back of the property, that long patch, yes, exactly, right there, that's another piece that last year we had a conversation, that you don't really know who owns that piece, we thought again that it could be the city, but in the, the map, it shows that it's the property owners of the, I think that's the ladies right there, that, uh, the storage, right there. So that's what it shows on the, I'm not sure if that's right. Either way, the ones is interested in potentially leasing both sides of it from the city and maintaining all of the grass. So on the back half right now, the grass is really high, and last year we actually had the, the, you guys down, cut it all down, it took a while because it gets up there. Um, and they just kind of got to, obviously, so it's, it's high, so the thought is, they would maintain it, they would take care of it, it's not really difficult because it's just around, like a lot of space. Um, but I think first we need to just allow the city engineers to actually research the deeds, uh, because we don't know.
I thought we had looked at that once before, and there's a possibility that that might still come up when we move to Sudbury.
There was, we don't know.
Or whatever it has held up, you're right.
Yeah, so I think, I'm not asking to do anything now, but basically just letting you know that I was approached, that they're interested in it, they have a, a thought, at least for the front half, to clean it up, and make it look nice, and the back half, at least take care of maintenance for us, and should they, everyone will spend, they'll come to us with plans on what they're gonna do over there. But, um, I think we just have to ask the engineer to do the research into who owns those lots, so we can decide what we, what we can do, so I don't think we have to know on that, but it's just, unless there's any, I'll just bring it up, see if you guys have any suggestions.
That parcel, I think was, was deep, all up in the eight hundreds, the railroad. And they had a clause in there, that one was there, abandoned, went back, original property under, number ones built that building, I think in nineteen eighty. And that parcel was on side of, uh, I know that came up as an issue, and that was a nice body shop, front street, there's a parcel piece in there that sold off behind the city. So basically, it's buried back to the city, because nobody came and claimed it, because everybody's passed away and so forth, so. Then people just wanna find out, herd back to the city, show me they could just spread two parcels, dollar a year, do what they do.
Yeah.
Let them maintain it, just so they don't hurt now.
The thought, they, they, they've already cleaned up the trailer that's out there, they, they proposed moving into the secondary, and using the back, about issues with what they want to do, but they're making it look nicer out there, a lot of work on the exterior of that building too, on that, or on the block.
The only concern I would have is the, the officers that are here now are, they're very proactive in what you're doing.
Yeah.
But once they change.
Sure, well, I'm sure the leash should have agility, that is something, one, if they're not maintaining the property, if their property being taken, uh, and then also they can come back to us for any reason, I'm sure there'll be language.
I can make them revert back to the city if.
And that's what we ran into before for a long time, was good, but the last four or five years, or whatever, it's just still, the leadership.
Next is the, uh, I was notified by Sudbury Municipal Authority, they're a unit tech engineering firm, uh, land updates and transfer station. Um, they're gonna be increasing the leachit collection system, gonna be installing tier weight system, they're gonna expand the group, so they have more undercover for unloading. And then, uh, the part that concerns us is the, um, increased permitted hours of operation to twenty-four seven. Now, they have no plans that actually operate twenty-four seven, but it does give them some flexibility on their hours. But DEP will require an acknowledgement from the city in order for them to approve the change to their permitted hours of operation. So a letter from the city was requested, I did require it for consideration, if there's no objections, I'll just go ahead and issue that letter.
See, the CDPG meetings have been canceled, right?
Yeah, they're all.
Right, apply for the, the.
Correct, right, the CDPG CV is the COVID response related CDPG, uh, part of money. Um, and that hearing starts at six PM on their Ring Central, uh, Cetacog's Ring Central virtual format. They will then at six thirty have the public meeting, this is the first public meeting for the CDPG entitlement money for FY twenty twenty. And that's our annual CDP entitlement, so this is the same process that we go through every year, same, same back channel. And then, um, and last announcement in part heritage, schedule the meeting for July twenty-third at six PM, we're gonna have it, weather permitting, in Cameron Park, if weather is not permitting, we'll come in right here. And then the next city council meeting, July thirteenth, same format as we have right here, public may attend, maintaining social distance. And then, uh, we will also have the Zoom option available for those who cannot, or prefer not to attend in person.
Public comments?
I'm just curious where we're at, the noise, it's organized, so Joel's working on.
Uh, first reading was the last, uh, meeting, and so on, second reading will be on July thirteenth.
July thirteenth, that's one of them.
I think. The noise, no, that passed.
The noise orders.
Yeah, that's right, that's a pass. Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
I slept through that, apparently.
I misspoke, yeah.
I'm attempting to get a hearing scheduled with the state.
Okay.
Because of COVID, it's a little difficult right now, they're waiting for us to agree.
So the LCP has not agreed.
Well, no, they can't without a very public hearing, a very public hearing to be held here, and the, due to COVID restrictions, it was a problem, but as soon as we can get it done, great. Thank you for your work, sure.
Anything else?
Anybody that is on, online, have any comments, go ahead.
Yes, I do, this is Victoria Rosenkranz. Uh, you guys were just talking about fireworks, and, um, I have a concern. I had a concern, uh, last Fourth of July, my concern is that we are well aware of a business owner in our city that sells the fireworks. This, a business owner also does a display at the river on Fourth of July. My question is, so if you go across that river, river wall, am I correct in saying that that is, um, at the amphitheater or wherever over there, is that city property?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, does this business owner get a, um, does he apply for something at the city to be able to do this display?
Yes.
And when he applies to do this, um, is there something in that, um, application that there is, uh, fire personnel present?
Yes.
They were not present last year, why was that?
Well, by knowledge, you were there.
Well, I physically walked myself over there, and I asked every person that came out across that river wall, is there a fire truck over there? So my concern, no, listen, please, let, let me finish here, so my concern is this, so you just told me that that's city property. And why, so what is, what is the actual, um, application that he fills out?
Actually, they came in and showed, uh, the insurance, what they're concerned with.
So, okay, my concern here is, is that I'm hearing, last city council meeting, we spent a lot of time talking about five feet away from parking meters for businesses who are having people eat on the pavement. My concern is that, and liability is a big word that I hear a lot during these meetings, and my concern is, is that the liability of fireworks being set off over there. Um, is there, you know, that fire apparatus is there, because all it takes is one of those fireworks to fire in the wrong direction, and it happens. And then the city is gonna be responsible for that, correct?
No.
No?
How does the business owner have insurance, they just said they supplies with insurance?
Okay. My other question is, so we have canceled River Fest, we have canceled Brew's on the Lake, we've canceled a lot of things in our city, so, and so when we have droves of people going down to the river to watch fireworks.
Well, River Fest and Brew's are not city related, those are SRI events.
I understand that, my question is this, if he's setting off fireworks down at the river, and lots of people go down and watch them, because I live three houses in from Front Street. My other concern is that, I live three houses in from there, and one of those fire off in a wrong direction. That's my concern, my concern is that right now we're dealing with COVID, things have been canceled, whether it's city or not, so I'm not gonna, you know, split hairs here. So I guess, I guess what I'm being told is he has insurance, and he's allowed to do a fireworks display on Fourth of July, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Interesting, okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Whipple?
I'd like, I'd like to say something whenever.
There was one more person on the, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Deb.
You ready for me, Jody?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, guys, um, my name is Deb Paus, and my concern is, I'm sick and tired of hearing these fireworks from Memorial Day all the way through Labor Day. The Fourth of July does not, that, they do not stop at the Fourth of July, it's getting annoying, the, on my block, there's several neighbors who have dogs that are petrified of these fireworks. This has got to stop, I couldn't hear a lot of your meeting as to what you're doing, but I had a very nice officer, don't remember his name last night, speak with me. And, you know, I, I'm thankful for, you know, him taking the time out to listen to me. Um, I've lived here fifteen years, and, you know, I live alone, and they're annoying, I'm sixty years old almost, they're annoying, it's gotta stop. The immaturity, and I did hear some fellows say, they were down here on Fourth and Walnut, I knew they were awful close to my house when I called the nine-one-one dispatch. I'm gonna keep doing it until someone does something about it, because it's gotta stop, it just has to stop, there is a time for this, not all four months, you know, not, not four months. You know, I can see a week, or I can see, um, like Memorial Day weekend, the, the week of the Fourth of July, and maybe Labor Day weekend, that's it, that's it. That is enough, is enough, you know? I, I go to bed, you know, nine, nine, nine-thirty at night, I don't need to be not able to sleep, because all these idiots out shooting off fireworks, M-80s and whatever else. It's just ridiculous, you know, I mean, it's, it's gotta stop somewhere.
This is Chief Harris, I agree with you, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I think Councilman Reese has addressed it, that we are gonna sit down, I will work with the, the city council, the mayor, and the administration's office, and we'll, we'll try to think of something for next year, it's too late for this year, unfortunately, but we'll definitely, we're gonna be addressing it, it does need to be addressed, we know that.
Well, I feel sorry for the puppies, my puppy died that didn't like fireworks, she had dementia and she passed away. So, you know, I, I don't have dogs, but my neighbor lady next to me, the lady that works down at the Americas, her German Shepherd ate a hole through the wall last year, on the fourth, because of these crazy fireworks. I mean, I feel for them, and they wonder why dogs run away, you know, they're trying to get away from the noise. You know, I mean, I'm trying to be reasonable, I understand, you know, I, I wanna see people have fun, especially because of the COVID, but not four months in a row, five, six, seven days a week. It's just gotta stop, and thank you, you know, Officer Harris, appreciate it, you know, but I understand it is too late, but there's just gotta be something done.
All right, thank you, Deb, appreciate it.
Yep, thanks, Jody, thanks, Officer Harris, appreciate it.
Couple comments, uh, heading the streets in Sudbury, I don't know who to talk to about them, but Susquehanna Avenue is horrible. It's, it's worse than Scrubwood, when you drive up and down there now, I'm not sure what's causing it, but it could be the former railroad ties underneath that street. But when you, you, when you're driving up and down that, if you have an older person, ah, not me, if you have an older person, they're gonna lose control of their cars up and down that street, it is that rough. That same thing right out here at Second Market, I, I don't know why it's been that way for years, they just seem to ignore it, why can't we do something with it? That's the one question, the other one is, at night, with, uh, the bakery up there on Baker Street, when they come in on Front Street, they will stop, they can stop sign, they come right on through. Someone's gonna get hit and killed. Why can't we address those people? Bakery company, tell their people to stop at the damn stop sign, that's why they're there. That's my comment.
First one, because it means Susquehanna, to put money into that now, and that's a future project, and that's on the list, it's from last year, I'm talking about, I'll use that for this.
Uh, Mr. Whipple?
Yes.
Susquehanna is one of the faces on the project, which will be starting here this fall on Reagan, okay?
Okay.
And as you said, the washboard, it's the old brick, uh, pavement underneath that meadow up there, and the same, the second market, the other avenue you're referring to?
Yes.
It's also the old brick in there.
I didn't know if this brick were from when the trolley.
Well, the trolley came down and went out toward the front, but that intersection still has a brick on it, they did fix it, or should tear everything back out and rebuild it from scratch. And Susquehanna is on the list to be done, because they're gonna put a new, uh, sewer line up, Susquehanna Avenue, and of course, we both should be the same time. Yeah, second street's actually still on the trolley track, isn't it? There is some. They wrapped it up last time, I saw. There at the corner by the other, there's some trolley stuff in there.
No, I, I know that trolley years ago used to run down Susquehanna Avenue, my grandfather would, they, trolley car drive. So, it is there.
And the stop sign thing, Mr. Whipple, I will get ahold of the manager up there and tell him that you need to, or they need to stop.
My concern is somebody's gonna get hit and killed, because they do not stop, they sometimes slow down, but sometimes they don't even do that, and with me working weekends like I do, I see it. And I know the police can't be everywhere, I understand that, I'm not blaming you, Deb.
Pass up of talking.
Okay, thank you, you're welcome, anything else?
Hello, everybody, last really we had here was a, 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 a room to talk about the community hours, and Mr. Weinberger, he said, for twenty years, he tried to bring the community hours here to the side, so please tell him to put proof, he tried for twenty years. He tried to, to borrow the four trojans, the penny of the dollar, and he blamed the police officers, he give it, he give it bicycles to, to them, you know, on the kids, to the policemen, and figure out if he give it. And figure out if he give it bicycles and police, or he's giving the other politicians, Cadillacs, Mercedes, I don't know. Oh, he said, he said before, the last meeting, for the, for the, for the poli, for the police station. All right, to, to trade like uh, to, to, to trade building. And when I say, I'm trying for twelve years to build a community colors, he came and said, he tried for twenty years. But also he say borrow sixty properties, because he was a customer for twenty years. And I want to know, he paid earth price on the penny of the dollar, on those four troches. Even about the, about the building, he buy the elementary school, right? What, before the auction, the radio advertised the, the elementary schools too. Doesn't have, no, no ready for classes, it's better for classes. Who's going to buy the school if the radio say that?
He bought that from the Schotters.
Yeah, he bought for the, but how much the building cost?
Well, he, I mean, there was an auction on that and.
It was an auction, but if the radio advertised the, the schedules for the, for the classes, who's going to be in the building? If the radio participated, the conspiracy, I mean, the, the, the corruption in, in, in here, what I call the building. Person for the, for the mayor officer said to me, you can make a medical and you can make a warehouse. Now I find out, for the medical, the ex-mayor, Jesse covered over there, the, the medical. When you take a public office, you help the sundry or you try to help yourself? Any mayor or customer take the, the place to help the public. And then even before this lady, I want to publish a newspaper for the kids, because everybody say they got the same rights. Yes, I believe we got the same rights, but we got the same responsibilities, okay? And to have the responsibility supposed to educate, because if you got education is power, okay? And I had you was to put a newspaper to inform the public, because the education does the piece of, of the progress. I don't got nothing for the, for this officer, this is delicate police officer, because I remember one night on uh, Halloween, you remember, you run up and down my building like a crazy. The intruder, they don't come from, from outside, they come for next building, Minga Norre. And I asked the, the best education for F P I, for the sugar carries and the witches, they benefit for them to, to succeed and make a progress without, without sweat. And the ex-mayor, he was a corrupter, because you remember who, once the the lady complained that God the bar crosses three, the Chinese standing and taking the bike in for my customers. And taking pictures, pictures and no buying nothing, she opened in the afternoon, the Chinese standing and the daytime, they don't bother her. And after the Chinese destroyed by somebody put roaches of the crops of the, and they left. That's the American dream, to saddle each other one the other. I asked the FBI to investigate the ex-mayor, because the time I came here, and I tell Mr. Mayor, I'm the owner of the three seventy market street, so what? And one lady say, is Chinese stay by the party? We changed the rules tomorrow, no parking in the buses. Why the change? They ask, he asked the customers to, to change the rules for the parking? No, I don't think so. Okay?
I, I mean, I'm, you're talking about something that's six years old.
Six years old, but like I was saying, with the ex-mayor Jesse, he's died. And they tell you for the court office, you can rent it at the medical and warehouse. For the medical, I don't know why they tell me, but for the medical, I find out he started the medical building over there.
I'm not sure, Mr. Demos, medical building where?
The police is now. You don't have the, the medical building over there? Before?
No, no, it's insurance building.
I don't know, but they tell me, you can rent it and the medical and no warehouse, why? Man, man, you, you, the man is the gate, I know you, and you say to knock it down my building to make a parking lot. That's same, because you don't care for the sundry, you don't care for the sundry, you care only for the parking.
Mr. Demos, I.
Is there a question? Is there a question?
Let's, let's not.
I saw you last night, I saw you last night, say the, the rules. Yeah, yeah, tell them, what he said to Mr., Mr. Mayor to knock it down the building, because you don't need no schools, we got schools. I see you, I see you.
Mr. Christian Demos, I, I'm, I'm not quite sure, the building where the police station is going was, it was.
Nothing wrong with the police station, I don't complain about the police station, that's a, the police station, that's a better place now. But when I bought the building, they say to me, you can rent it and the medical and no warehouse, why?
Are you talking about the zoning?
And now, and now, no parking. Yeah, excuse, why you changing parking rules?
So you're upset that you can't rent that medical facility or warehousing facility?
Yes.
Have you come to us about that? At least you got it since I've been there.
Yeah. Why, why they done with that?
When did they?
After, after twelve years, after twelve years, I, I found the positive for that, because it was a medical place over there.
I know Joshua, I thought to see your building and address.
I know, but the newspaper, I don't know, and they make it wrong or make it purpose. They put the others, the small stores for free and they warned me and come to rent the place for free.
You said it was free for ten years.
The main building, no, the other one is more brilliant.
Oh, we didn't, I don't, I don't even remember that was even, I mean, from my understanding.
But you tried, you tried.
No, no, I know, we were saying, we were just, from my understanding, we went through, I was bureauing referring to that big building, not the building behind you. I don't think you are, I said it was anything, but yeah, because that's a different.
They come and warn me for free, the small store, the large store for free.
I mean, that was, yes, that was, from my understanding, I don't remember ever.
I think that's what we all want to stretch, to have.
Someone that wants to point at it, that's medical warehousing, so.
And the other thing, we blame the president, we blame, the Democrats blame the president, he's registered, okay? Look what happened, and read it for me, because maybe you lack one or another, because my.
I mean, I, I prefer, I prefer not to read, I'll just.
What, what is it?
The black people are supposed to.
It's, it's.
We're exterminating like a, why, we, we brought a lot. She's like, she's like, she's Democrat, Mr. Obama, pray for her, God bless her, and things like that, that's a hypocrite.
Okay, so, so Mr. Demos, so I guess, we're, we're, our question, so you're saying, so for your building, there are markings, not the back, the front, which we're bought.
Oh, yes.
So you're, so you're.
So I've told them, for the, for the police department, going to be free forever. And to take it for ten years for free, to fix it. You tried bringing my knees to destroy me because I'm outside? Come on, even, okay, I said, Mr. Mayor, that's, I'm the owner of the three seventy one, so what?
Yeah, I mean, like, so I, I guess my question now is, so you were approached by individuals, like you wanted to put medical and there's no warehouse?
Yeah, they're coming, this guy, when he discuss it, over there in the small store.
Was this, was this just recent or is this in the past?
The past, well, the newspaper for the, and you thought was free, and what I tell them to make, they just, you know, call me no more. You know, that's, that's, that's false information, you know.
Let's, let's, can we, can we just pop?
Yes, sir. So I want to be here with you and discuss it, because I love this country, I'm fifteen years in here, and you see what happens, everybody asks for it for their rights, but nobody asks for the responsibilities, okay? And here they make it black holiday, very good, God bless it, but we got the sever ice and sever responsibilities. No going to break in the stores and make it.
I gotta cut you off there, sir, you're, you're getting into a position we can't talk about.
Okay, you can talk about the, the, the president, so.
I have a private meeting.
Yeah, private meeting, okay.
All right, all right.
But I, I had the FBI camera, because one lady got the bar over there and they say, Mr. Mayor, the Chinese come and take a picture, picture, and nobody come in my store.
Mr. Demos, we.
So we changed the rules, they no let the Chinese to park in the mirrors. And after a few, few days later, they put the cash register in the, in the closing box of store.
Anything else, anyone else?
That's it.